Good evening. Calling the September 24th, 2024 Town Council Committee of the Whole Regular Meeting to Order, 6:33. We have Counselor Merritt, who is not in attendance this evening. We have Counselor Bordelon online. Counselor Pacino is here. Counselor Rusk. Counselor Jones will not be in attendance. Counselor McBride and Gajewski are here. And Counselor Parker will be joining us a little bit later. She is representing the council at TVCCI. And of course, I'm here. All right, so we have Calendar and Communications. Counselor Bordelon, do you have anything you would like to share? Counselor Bordelon, are you in attendance? All right, well, Madam Mayor. We don't have a quorum if Counselor Bordelon is not in attendance. So we're going to have to wait until Counselor Bordelon comes online. In our rules, we can wait, we are supposed to wait up to 30 minutes.
My apologies for those.
Just to let everybody know, there is a spider crawling around the desk here. And it's pretty fast. And it happened while I was.
So we're just trying to find the spider.
All right, I'm good right now.
She just texted that it's not working.
Maybe she can, is there an issue with Zoom, maybe?
She says she can't hear. I tested the audio.
Maybe she should log off and log back in, maybe?
She's saying she can't hear the audio. I tested the microphone beforehand and it was okay. I ran the test and it was fine.
Yeah, it's picking you up right now.
Hello? Yeah, it's picking us up.
Do you want me to try to zoom in and see if that will work? Like if it's a Zoom issue?
Should she try logging off and log you out again?
Nope, she just logged off.
Okay, good. See if it works. Let's see what happens. We should go back up.
We have to stop.
7:30, uh, 7:02?
Let's see, she just came back on. Counselor Bordelon, can you hear us now?
I can hear you.
Perfect. Okay, where else is there?
All right. All right. We're going to continue. Counselor Bordelon, do you have any Calendar and Communications you'd like to share?
Um, yes, thank you. I attended one of the Board of Ed meetings this week in person, one virtually. Received a lot of messages about concerns with, you know, the paras and the way in which the notices were given out based on the grievances that were talked about at one of the meetings this, this week. Let me just see what else. That's all I have right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Pacino?
I do not have anything to pass tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rusk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On 9/17, the Public Safety Committee met. It was Counselor Pacino, Counselor Merritt, and myself. We met with the Groton Ambulance and Mystic River Ambulances to discuss a plan for funding. The next meeting to continue that discussion will be October 29th at 4:30. Just a few things going on in town this week. Groton Public Library is holding a diaper drive all week. They're collecting diapers through September 29th. They can be a new di, new box of diapers or even an open box of diapers. If you have extra diapers, that would be great. And the Mobile Food Pantry will be this Friday at St. John's at 12:30. Groton Human Services put out a notice that they are looking for jelly rice cereal spaghetti ravioli spam instant potatoes, canned fruit soup and crackers and cookies. And then Launch of Groton 2025, which is a community plan for conservation and development, is on Tuesday, October 1st at 4:30 at Sutton Park. Additionally, we all received a letter in the mail that I'm going to read into the record. It says, it's dated September 18th, 2024. Dear Board Members and Town Councillors, I am writing to bring to your attention a concerning issue regarding a student who has been falsifying and staging their residence to attend high school within our district. As a concerned member of our community and advocate for fair and equitable education, I believe it is important to address this matter promptly. Despite being reported to the superintendent last, late last year, the family managed to deceive the investigation by misrepresenting and fabricating the residence. I am not going to state this child's name because I think that it's inappropriate. Anyways, it goes on to discuss this. I will forward this to the Board of Education and let them take care of it because I believe that that is under their jurisdiction and not ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McBride?
Thank you. Received the numerous emails and correspondence others have mentioned. Don't have a lot to report tonight, but I did want to commend the police on their actions on Saturday at the Esther Point car accident and I guess the, I guess the fugitive they, they captured. And one thing I want to bring to everyone's attention because it occurred to me, my, I have several family members and friends that live in the area around Esther Point. And my wife got an alert, which I thought was wonderful. The police linked up, I talked to the chief about it. They linked up and they got an alert informing the residents that this person was on the loose. So I thought it was great that that was done. And, you know, everybody took precautionary measures to make sure everything was taken care of. And when I found out, we're talking to the chief, I didn't get the alert myself. And I was wondering why, and I didn't sign up for the Connecticut alert. So, and I talked to the chief and it's out there on the internet, it's Facebook. He's done a great job of promoting it, but I just want to make sure the residents know. www.ctlert.gov. If you sign up there and you put your email or your text, anytime there's an incident like this, you're, you'll be, you'll be informed of the situation. I think it would be great if we can get more people involved in that because, like I said, I myself and several others, we're not on that alert system. So I just want to inform the residents to do that. So in case a situation like that arises again, you'd be informed of the situation. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing that was already stated. That was my communication.
All right, thank you. All right, so I would like to address some of the remarks made during last night's Board of Ed meeting as several of the members directly referenced the Town Council. The Board of Education voted down requesting any assistance or additions to the town's departmental operations review of the Board of Education's financial practices. Board of Ed members also requested an inquiry through their attorney to actively fight against the operational review. I feel compelled to respond to some of the allegations and conversations. At the meeting, there were conversations that included verbal attacks and criticism of Town Councillors, misinformation, personal opinions, and rhetoric that could be interpreted as inflammatory and divisive. This is same Board of Ed rhetoric that was demeaning in nature and was referred to as harmful by the auditors hired by the Town of Groton. I am beginning to notice an alarming pattern of defensiveness when it comes to financial questions or budgetary matters from the Board of Education, as if the Board is taking these questions, inquiries, and reviews as personal attacks. As the Town Council, it is our duty to the taxpayers and to the families of students who attend Groton Public Schools to ensure that we are doing the right thing for Groton financially and in terms of our budgetary choices. I have extended an olive branch to the Board of Education to ensure they are informed of the Town Council choices to look into such financial matters, even though it is not required. On numerous occasions, I have invited the school superintendent and the chair to council meetings. The superintendent, superintendent has yet to attend a meeting. A Board of Ed member disrupted the business of our council meeting. A Board Member, Board of Ed members were invited to attend our town audit meeting where they would be able to ask questions, and yet much of the board did not attend. Members of the Board of Ed have continued to engage in an unproductive approach by making remarks like the comments made in last night's Board of Ed meeting. We asked the Board of Ed if they would like to work with the council and add or request additions to the town's operational review as a way for both the town and the Board of Ed to gather information, correct issues, and forge a path forward in our own respective ways. Even though the defensiveness of the Board of Education has come off as divisive and the path to figuring out a responsible financial future for Groton students has been rocky, I will continue to extend my hand to work with the Board of Education and hope they will choose to do the same in a respectful, mature fashion that will be best for Groton in the long run. I hope going forward that our relationship will heal and strengthen. And as for me, I will continue to serve the residents of our town with a steady hand and to the best of my abilities. Also, this evening, I attended the Steel Workers Union 941 NARCAN training, and it was very informative on overdoses within the workplace. Very informative. And that's all I have, so let's move on. So approval of minutes, 2024-838, September 3rd, 2024, and September 10th, 2024 minutes. Counselor Gajewski, would you like to take that?
Yes. Item 2024-838, September 3rd, 2024, and September 10th, 2024 minutes. Motion to approve the Committee of the Whole Special Meeting Minutes of September 3rd, 2024, and the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of September 10th, 2024. So moved.
Second. Moved by Gajewski, seconded by Rusk. Any comments?
Mayor, I had pointed out, wasn't any of you being corrected?
Right, so, um, so there was a correction. You did notice us that it was on, which page is it in here?
Page seven of the packet, page three of the minutes.
Thank you.
Right before you see the box to vote, the main motion with amendment.
All right, so the main motion with amendment should read, "To recommend a resolution approving the use of $37,906.98 from NIP funds received in FYE 2024, $37,453.55 from FYE 2025 NIP funds, and the remaining $24,639.47 from the Fleet Fund to purchase a litter vacuum vehicle and to refer the item to the RTM per Rule 6.5.3." That should be amended.
Can you say?
Sure. Thank you.
You're wrong.
Any other comments? All right, so we'll vote on the amended minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Bordelon, I haven't heard your vote. Any opposed? Abstentions?
All abstained.
All right, on the amendment. All right, that passes five to zero to one, and then we'll vote on the whole motion together. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
All abstained.
That passes five to zero to one. Moving on to new business, 2024-820, 99 Gold Star Highway, Public Finance Authority. This is on page 12 of our packet. Counselor McBride, would you like to take that one?
Just the motion?
Yes, please.
Yes. Excuse me. 2024-820, 99 Gold Star Highway, Public Finance Authority. Make a motion to recommend a resolution setting a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, TEFFRA, public hearing on October 22nd, 2024, for consideration of approval for the issuance of tax-exempt revenue bonds by the Public Finance Authority for 99 Gold Star Highway, Groton, Connecticut.
Second.
Moved by McBride, seconded by Gajewski. All right, so who do we have joining us this evening, Mr. Burt? It's going to be?
David Mitchell from Good Homes and Gary Melinda from Community Finance Corp.
Thank you.
Would you like me to read anything from the packet or just let them?
Do we have any staff that's going to be joining us?
No, not this morning.
No? Okay. If you want to give us a synopsis first, that'd be great.
Read from the packet.
It's up to you.
You may recall on April 2nd, 2024, the Groton Town Council adopted a resolution authorizing the town to enter into a lease agreement for a space at 99 Gold Star Highway to accommodate a small public police station, substation. The developer, Mr. Mitchell here of Good Homes, has requested agreement from the Town Council to authorize the issuance of tax-exempt revenue bonds through the Public Finance Authority, a Wisconsin-based government entity established by law in 2010 and which is authorized to issue tax-exempt revenue bonds for projects in all 50 states. To finance the 99 Gold Star Highway project, which intended, under the tax-exempt bond requirements, to provide housing for persons and families of low and moderate income, this does not create any financial obligation on behalf of the town and does not require the town to issue any bonds. Let's see, the process first requires the town to hold a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TEFFRA, public hearing, followed by approval of a resolution. A TEFFRA hearing is a public inquiry required by the Internal Revenue Service of nonprofit borrowers that intend to issue tax-exempt debt. A TEFFRA hearing provides the public an opportunity to comment on the use of tax-exempt bond proceeds by the specific borrowing institution to finance the capital needs. If the, if the request is, if, if the town, if the Town Council recommends approval of a public hearing, the request is to hold it on October 22nd and to follow up that night with discussion on the resolution. And I just will note that we had our assessor look at the documents. We had Ray Baraboe, one of our attorneys who is here, review it. We had our bond counsel, and then we also had planning department. So got quite a few eyes on this, just to make sure there was no issues.
Okay, and if we, we need our town attorney to come up and answer questions, he's available as well, correct?
Yes, if there's any.
Okay. Counselor McBride, jumping right out in front?
No, I just have a question. Excuse me, I think we changed the 22nd meeting to the 29th because of the Martin Luther King.
Oh, that is true. Good catch.
So should I amend the motion?
Good catch. I'm going to check that calendar real quick. Oh, you know what? He's got a calendar right?
Yes, 29th.
The 29th, we moved, yeah. Just move to the 29th.
No, we just moved that.
Shall we make it the 29th? Is there a timeline? The 29th would be good?
Go make an amended motion.
Should we make it an amended motion or should we just make a correction?
Just make the correction.
Correction? And Counselor Gajewski, you agree?
Yep.
Okay, so we're moving that to the 29th. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to Groton.
Thank you.
And would you like to give us any insight as to what you're here for?
We have a brief presentation, but first I want to thank the Town Council, Madam Mayor, not only for the time this evening, but also for the support that you've given this project since we've come to you really early in 23, when, when we asked for the zoning to be changed from what it was as the Groton Inn and Suites to residential. And I can, I can tell you that, you know, we deal with a lot of municipalities throughout the country and the support and the professionalism that we've received from the Town of Groton has been outstanding. So I thank you for that. Our presentation is brief and, you know, and we look forward to your questions. The first page is really just about, about Good Homes, which is a developer. Good Homes is, is, is in the business of really trying to be part of the solution of answering, you know, the attainable housing question, which is throughout the country has created massive shortages of, of housing. And the shortages are really as a result of rising construction prices and, you know, and ever rising construction prices and really not with, and wage not really keeping parity over the last 25 years. And, and there really hasn't been housing built for our tenants in 25 years. Our tenant traditionally makes somewhere between $35,000, $40,000 a year and $100,000 a year, depending upon the geographic location. And the last time housing was built for that tenant was 25 years ago. And, you know, a third of that housing has disappeared. A third of that housing has been turned into something else, and a third of that housing is really 25 years old and shows it. Specifically to 99 Gold Star Highway, we bought this property in March of, March 31st, 2023, and it is, and we've, we've done a soup to nut renovation. I'm happy to tell you that, you know, that I think there's six units left to go through the certificate of occupancy process, but of all the units that are, that are available have, have already been rented. And, and we have a fairly large waiting list for those six units. And we are, we're thrilled by the tenants that we have. They're all on one-year leases, and it's really turning out to be a very robust community. The, the communities are very similar to what we do around the country. We buy, our secret sauce, if you will, is, is buying obsolete hotels like the Groton Inn and Suites and vacant senior housing. And we do that as far north as Erie, Pennsylvania, and as far south as El Paso, Texas. And what we really look for is to take these older properties and convert them into very robust and dynamic multifamily communities and really try to build a community atmosphere around them. And I'm going to tell you some of the ways that we do that. You know, one of the big things about what we do is we amenitize our communities. So in most cases, we have a world-class gym. I mean, the Groton Inn and Suites, or the former Groton Inn and Suites, Good Homes of Groton, will have a fairly massive world-class fitness center, yoga rooms. We'll have a golf simulation, a, a private movie theater. And as part of the ongoing amenity package, we have a co-working space, game rooms, and very abundant laundry facilities. And, you know, about half of our units on a nationwide basis are furnished. I mean, it's really a tenant request. We have a partnership with Wayfair. And, you know, all of our units across the country have the same, the same amenities. They all have the same kitchen cabinets, the same appliance package, the same flooring. And so what we try to do is really elevate each of these communities to our brand standard. You know, one of the, Mr. Burt mentioned, you know, the lease with the Town of Groton Police. It's really one of the things that we really try to outreach into our communities that we're in, is to build for local law enforcement, a police substation and to, at no cost, and either for the build-out or for the occupancy. And we also offer a substantial discount to public service workers, whether they be EMT, police, or fire, and really try to thank them and the community by offering them a, a substantial discount to, to the monthly rent. And that's been the case in Detroit, it's been the case in Fairfield, North Carolina. And the, and we find that, you know, that is a true embrace, I mean, of, of what we do. I would like, the only slide I really want to pull out is the slide that has the hierarchy, if you will, or the flow chart. Well, we're asking tonight, and Gary Melinda will go into much further detail into the participants, what we're asking tonight really is, is simply, was a recognition, a recognition by this, by the Town Council that this municipal bond, which is being issued by the State of Wisconsin, the Public Finance Authority of the State of Wisconsin, is, is being used inside of your community. It's an IRS regulation, it's a State of Wisconsin regulation, that the local community just gives recognition to the fact that an out-of-state issuer is issuing a bond, and those funds are being used inside of, of your, of your town. So the participants in this, at the top of the chart is a not-for-profit, and Gary will go through a detail of what Community Finance Corporation is, but they've been in business for 20 years. They've done over $2 billion of this type of transactions. And, and they are, in essence, the titled owner of 99 Gold Star Highway. Good Homes over, over to the side is the developer and the asset manager. On the bottom horizontal column, Jeffries Group is an underwriter investment bank based in New York City. They sell the bonds to, the municipal bonds to institutions. In the last transaction that we did in April in Erie, Pennsylvania, Franklin Templeton was a buyer, Nuveen, and the Nuveen Bond Fund was a buyer, the Erie Insurance Company. And Jeffries puts together, in essence, the sale of those municipal bonds. The issuer, as we've gone over, is the, basically the Public Finance Authority of the State of, State of Wisconsin. They issue bonds throughout the 50 states for municipal activities. And that is really the, the participants in, in this municipal bond, and I would very much like, very much like Gary to go into detail who these participants are, or really what their track records are, and then we'll come back to our request.
Thank you, David. Again, my name is Gary Melinda, representing Community Finance Corporation, which is based in Tucson, Arizona. Since it was formed, the organization was formed in 1991, and its charitable purpose is lessening the burdens of government and/or nonprofit organizations. Since completing its first project in 2001, as David mentioned, we've been involved and successfully brought to market over 20 projects for a little over $2 billion. The legacy channel has been governmental projects, ranging from office buildings to police and fire courts, infrastructure projects. Student housing has been another area we've been active, which certainly is governmental educational purposes. And in the last couple of years, I think David captured, and I think most of the members of the council are aware, there's the critical need for housing of all types in, throughout the U.S., but in just about every community that you take a look at. The game plan here is remarkably efficient, really. The ability to take an existing property and convert it is in and of itself a positive thing for, for most communities. To be sustainable over 30 years, obviously there has to be a financial bottom line, the project has to make sense, it has to be sustainable to attract investment capital and to be a good, you know, neighbor, a good part of the community. So it serves a social purpose. As we've described, 40% of the units will be set aside and rented to households that are below 60% area of needed income. That's really the only restriction, if you will. And then there's an energy efficiency aspect to this versus new construction because, you know, you're just, your carbon use utilization on new construction is much higher, and repurposing a building serves a lot of benefits, including the environmental side. So we're very, very much like the, the model that Good Homes has developed over time. We did participate with Good Homes on the project in Erie, Pennsylvania, which was successfully brought to market and financed. And we've also, another project that our understanding was, was a ground-up construction project for the city of Miami Beach, Florida, which is very interesting because it's a very high-rent type of community. But the city was very committed to providing housing for its hospitality workers, artists, people that have very long commutes, very expensive for them, and difficult, you know, not well-served by transit. So that project was built on city land. It also supports economic development in the sense there's- It also supports economic development in the sense there's, a floor of the building is rented by the Miami City Ballet, where they're artists, they're visiting artists and dancers and so forth. So it supports the city through, as we mentioned, the profit side of things. We are a nonprofit, so it's not, it's not our role, it's really to facilitate things that are good for the community. The ground rent will go to the city, the city intends to use that to support the arts. So it's a very virtuous circle, if you will, the way the project was designed. The city did step in, step up with some additional GO bond money to help fill the gap, to make sure that, you know, as construction costs, supply chain issues, financing costs rose, the city was very much an active participant. So these are projects that we're, our board is very excited about, the housing space. We think it's, not, it's a critical need, but we think there are some very robust solutions utilizing this financing mechanism that's been successfully deployed for over 20 years. So we're, we're very excited about this. We had, I'd had a chance to tour the property today. Coming along, still some work to do, it's David's challenge, but we're very much looking forward to the opportunity to answer any questions you may have and support your decision-making.
Yeah.
So I just want to point out two things. First is, you know, all but six units are rented and, you know, we've already met the qualification for 40% of the units, it's 60% of AMI. You know, the AMI in, in the Town of Groton is high and, you know, in our studios and our cozy one-bedrooms meet that test. And so, and as far as, you know, finishing construction, you know, we are probably at the 95% mark, with the exception of the amenity space, which we hope to finish by, I would say mid, mid-October at this point. Yeah, I just want to reference one other point. Gary and I were involved in the project in Erie. Basically, we bought in 1976 Hilton that had really stopped operating in the center of, in the center of Erie. And what the, this financing allowed us, is allowing us to do is convert it into 197 residential units. As a result of the closing, on the day we closed, 115 of those units were already pre-leased to the University of Pittsburgh Medical Center, Hammond Hospital, the Erie Downtown Development Corp., which is largely backed by the Erie Insurance Company, and Gannon University. And the bottom floor, this 32,000 square feet of commercial space in that building, 40% of it's already been leased to University of Pittsburgh Medical Center as 60 doctors' offices. And that's a project that we hope to complete by April 1st of next year. It's in construction now. That was successfully oversubscribed as far as its municipal bonds. The city of Erie has embraced it and the governor, Governor Shapiro of the Commonwealth has made it a priority one project. And it's already received one RACPE grant, which is a, a grant given by the state and it's in line now to, and that RACPE grant for $1 million, it's in line now to get additional $3 million of RACPE grants. Up the road, so to speak, in Warwick, Rhode Island, we convert, we have successfully, we, we bought the former Sheridan at the airport and we were in the process of converting that into similar housing that we are, that we've done here in Groton. And the, and the state of Rhode Island has actually given us a $2.3 million grant for moderate income for 27 units. That's 80 to 120% AMI. And that property alongside our properties in Detroit and our two properties in Fairfield and this property are all part of the same bond issue. And so it's, it's, these five properties all come together into one singular bond issue. And that bond issue is something that we hope to issue shortly after your town council meeting now on the 29th. So. So our request is really, is a, just want to repeat it, is, is, is really more of a, I call it a recognition that the Public Finance Authority of the state of Wisconsin is issuing these bonds and the monies are to be used in the Town of Groton. So we're ready for any questions.
Okay.
If I can make one more comment.
We were doing so well.
We'd also very much like to extend the invitation for the Town of Groton to recommend a person to sit on an advisory committee, which would be, work with us as the nonprofit owner of the property, the asset manager, David's team, the property manager, to make sure, you know, this project really is a good citizen, local citizen, and there's awareness of issues that need to be addressed and work in a collaborative fashion to make sure we're, we're always communicating. So I very much appreciate your consideration of that. It can be, you have discretion, it could be housing, someone in the community that's a housing person with a nonprofit, could be city staff. So have a lot of latitude as to which way you'd, and whom you'd like to appoint to that, and it can change over time. So we definitely would like to extend that invitation to you.
Great, thank you. All right, open up your questions, Councilor Gajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you both for coming to you, for coming this evening. My first question is, is the CFC through the mayor is, is a company based out of Arizona, correct?
Correct.
And where is Good Homes based out of?
It's based in New York.
Based in New York, okay, thank you. And then the, so the finance, the bond is coming from the Public Finance Authority, which is under the jurisdiction of the state of Wisconsin?
Correct. Yes.
And that, so what are the, are there any, like, legal requirements with that in this sense with the state of Wisconsin?
The one legal requirement is very similar to the IRS requirement, which is a public hearing, a TFR hearing, which is, which basically recognizes that the state of Wisconsin, through its public finance authorities, is issuing bonds to be used in the Town of Groton.
And through the mayor, have you had experience getting, receiving bonds from them in the past?
For the public, yes, but not in this context, but I have received, I've done other financings with the public finance authority.
Community Finance Corporation has also borrowed from the Public Finance Authority of Wisconsin.
And could you, Mr., I know your first name's David. Could you explain your experience with them and what that was and kind of like the requirements that you had?
Sure. We had an opportunity to work on a project which was located in San Antonio, Texas. It was a convention center hotel that was previously owned by Hyatt. Integral part of the city's economic development plan is to, is to support the convention center, which is a huge economic engine for the city. A lot of job creation, direct and indirect, associated with visitors who are visiting the, the city, different, both within the state of Texas and national groups that come in. So the, our, our role is to, again, purchase the, the hotel component of the project from Hyatt. And we did borrow from the Public Finance Authority, was the issuer of the bonds, state of Wisconsin. And the project has, was successfully closed on an aggressive schedule. So they're very, very good group, they're very strong, very professional. They are the, you know, once the, the conduit issuer, if you will, so it's the access to the public capital markets through the issuer of the bonds. They're not the lender in the traditional sense that they have money that they're giving out, they're just a means of accessing the funds. And as, as David described, that's really the investment bank, Jeffries, that puts together the offering documents that investors consider when they make the decision to purchase, purchase those bonds. So, so we do have a good track record working with, with the PFA.
Great, I greatly appreciate that information. Just a little bit more background. So my understanding through the mayor is that you have, you're asking for $32.5 million from the Public Finance Authority?
Yes, and that sometimes is grossed up a little bit, you know, plus or minus not to exceed 35 million, but that's correct.
Okay. And is it a possibility you get rejected for that request? Or, and then if you do, what is the contingency plan?
It would be highly unlikely that the PFA would not support the request. So we've got an application into them and we would see no reason they would reject that. But to answer your question, there are other issuers potentially that could be approached that are, quote, national, or, or really any issuer. So, but the, the idea is you've got multiple projects in multiple states, so it's, it's the most efficient way to accomplish that objective is to bundle those up into one larger offering.
Okay, you used my fear of, with potential other funders. And then, um, that is it for me. Oh, wait, no, hold on, forgot. There was one question, there was a term I did not recognize in one of the packets. I just wanted you to define real quick, of course I can't find it. Oh, on page four of the presentation, it says, on the last dot of the deal summary, it says, "Property is fully occupied within three months of launch with market rents at 15% above pro forma." I'm a little confused on the terminology of pro forma means. Could you explain that?
It was our original pro forma. You know, we underwrite substantially below the market rents. And so that was our original pro forma when we, when we came to you. Now going, you know, when I think about it, it was, we came to you in December of '22 and we had a pro forma at that point. And so we, so this is, this is higher than the pro forma that we showed you in, in 2022.
So it's essentially a budget.
It was a budget. Well, we went, well, we came here for the change in zoning. But the, currently, you know, we have now is the, all but six of these units rented at, well, the 40% are at 60% AMI and the rest are, restaurant market, which is, for us is 80% to 100% of AMI.
Okay. I'm good, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Councilor Russ?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things, I am not very familiar with this, so what does a tax-exempt revenue bond, what's the impact on Groton?
Nothing, that's one of the first things we looked at. You know, it's nothing to do with property taxes.
Okay, so it doesn't decrease your property tax, it doesn't impact the community?
That was the number one question.
Thank you.
We spent extensive time looking at that.
Your town manager, that was his first question, his second and his third question.
Thank you, I'm glad we're on the same wavelength. And just out of curiosity, what is the AMI in Groton?
It's a function of household size, so, you know, one, one, two, three, four, five. So I, I have to admit, I did not research that prior to the meeting, and it does change every year.
Okay.
So, you know, this would be, this would be targeted to single people and we expect there'd be, or you may be able to tell me this, but there definitely are single head of household tenants that will be here as well, so.
So you said that 40%, and this is kind of a little bit off topic, but you touched on it, so I'm going to ask about it. You said 40% of the units will be rented to households at or below 60% of AMI. Does that change rent? I mean, what is that?
It's a, so the, the rule of thumb and the rent restriction works as following, you take the AMI for the overall area, not just specifically Groton, and you take 60% of that number. So if you're dealing with a studio apartment per se, this is quicker number, $60,000, you take 60% of that, $60,000. And then 30% of that number, it would become your annual rent.
Can you walk through that one more time?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I lost you in there.
Let's just use a base, let's just use a base of 100. Let's just believe the, and it's not 100, but believe it's 100. So 60% of 100 would be 60,000. And so the, so rent, it would equivalent to 30% of the, of the 60%, or in this case, $60,000. So your rent could not exceed 30% of the 60%.
Okay.
And, you know, we do an all-in rent, meaning that the utilities are included in that, but the enhanced Wi-Fi is not.
Okay.
And, and pet fees are not included, but those are the only two exclusions that would be out of that rent.
Okay.
So all the amenities, all the, you know, the health, the gym member, all of that would be included in, in that rent.
Right, thank you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Councilor McBride?
Thank you, I just have a follow-up, just one question that Councilor Russ can mention briefly. I, I just want to better understand this because you're issuing tax-exempt revenue bonds, but no portion of your project is tax-exempt?
What, when you say no portion of the project is tax exempt?
The property?
The property.
No, no, the property, we're not seeking a tax, a property tax exemption for the property.
So it's like a municipal bond, if a governmental bond, for example, is tax-exempt to the holder of the bond, whether you're owning it in a mutual fund, Vanguard or Fidelity, you don't pay taxes on the interest that you're earning. So we'll be accessing the same municipal markets that government accesses as a 501(c)(3). So the, the rates are, interest rates are typically a little bit lower on tax-exempt debt than taxable, which benefits the project and works towards the affordability long-term. So the, the tax exemption is talking about to the investor that's holding the bonds. The real property tax is paid locally through the normal channels.
So the reason you're here is to get our approval because you're, you're, that's the, that's the ability of you to issue tax-exempt bonds is because you're coming through the Town of Groton?
Correct.
Your project is not tax-exempt, or does it have any plans to be tax-exempt in the future?
No.
Okay, thank you.
It's a requirement of the, the tax code to hand the state of Wisconsin as the issuer to have the awareness for the Town of Groton and, and to hold that hearing to check the box, if you will, and satisfy the code.
Because there should be some benefit to the residents, that's why you have the hearing, so we can comment on the projects overall.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Portman?
Thank you. Thank you for presenting tonight and, you know, choosing Groton as a space that you wanted to, you know, repurpose a hotel that's already taking up space. I'm fairly big about environment and sustainability. I hope to see some initiatives that are, you know, as you, already repurposing the space, but really looking at, really keeping, you know, some green trees and looking at some ways to bring in some other alternatives to power, looking at solar and other ways to cut down costs and, and help with our carbon neutrality to make sure that we're looking into the future. I'm really familiar with this, I did a lot of research on this. So my understanding, which was already stated, is that basically what we're doing is making sure that we hold your feet to the fire, that you're going to be making sure you're staying in that AMI, that you're providing housing at a fair market rate to people, obviously that fall below that, is that correct?
I think so, yes. And there is a, a document filed in the records, a regulatory agreement that documents those requirements of this, this type of project, and this project.
Right. And to us, there's really no financial liability, you're not asking for any tax exemptions, like I said, I did a lot of research on this. So I appreciate your, you know, ability to reach beyond the pockets and look at the ways in which you can enhance the lives of communities for people that fall below. As a former, you know, military family, as well as a mom with a son in the military, a lot of their friends are looking for housing in the area and they're having trouble. These guys are single and girls that are making 40,000, 50,000, they're 18 to 21 years old, and they're having trouble finding affordable housing that's, you know, in the area. So I like the fact that you talk about the military on here as well. So what price range, my, my question is, if one person's making 30,000 and one person is making 60,000, 30% is going to be different from your neighbor, is that correct?
No.
I'll rephrase my question, I apologize. So I, I make 30,000, my neighbor makes My neighbor makes 60,000. Our rents would be different because of that 30% requirement of the, that scale that you spoke of, of the rates in the area?
If I could answer it the following way. If, we have 40% of the units are going to be avail, are going to be, in essence, regulated to people who are making, who are the 60%, households that are making 60% of the area median income.
Or less.
Or less. You know, they still have to qualify and, under a lease underwriting, that our third-party manager will underwrite their lease application. But it's, it's not a fluctuating rent based upon income. It is more an availability of housing being set aside, if you will, for households at 60% of AMI or less. But it's not a, it doesn't fluctuate to the person's income.
Okay, good. Thanks for clarifying that, because I know some of the awards I saw, they did have that availability, where it was truly that 30%, it wasn't a flat rate. So again, I don't think that's a game changer for me. Affordable housing is needed, but it is tough when one person's making 40,000 and the other person's making 60,000, and they're paying the same rates rents. So that, you know, is there any way to look at further, under this grant or this structure with these bonds, to look at more affordability?
It is a, basically a, I don't know, it's basically set up as a matrix, and, you know, in order for the bonds to get purchased by the investors, these bond funds or individuals, you know, they rely upon this matrix. So I've never seen it in this context as a variable. You know, part of our, part of our mantra with our investment bank is to make sure that these bond issues all look the same as far as structure. There are other programs, we don't, we're not in the Lytec business, we're not in the, you know, the subsidized housing business per se, but there are other programs that I, that I have seen fluctuations in rent being prescribed based upon, based upon income. This is not that. This is, you know, creating an availability of housing at a certain AMI range. And to date, you know, the people and the families that are living at 99 Gold Star Highway, 40% of them meet this criteria already, and they're already living there.
Just organically, based on the rent.
Yeah, just, yeah, just organically.
Well, I thank you for explaining, and I appreciate it. I think it's wonderful. There's a lot of talk about needing affordable housing for EB employees, and I think this is a model that fits that, because not everyone's making six figures at EB. There is workforce readiness that's needed. So I thank you guys for considering that, and I look forward to seeing this. And like I said, I don't see any liability to the town unless these policies that are stated in here aren't being followed. But it doesn't seem that that would be an issue, so I'm excited to see where this goes. Thank you.
Thank you. I have some questions for our town attorney. Do you mind coming up?
Good evening, for the record. My name is Ray Verabo.
Thank you. Would you like to make sure that the microphone is on?
Point of clarification, can I hear his name?
Yeah, I just asked him to use the microphone. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
There you go. Sounds good. So I have to ask you, because you're our advisor.
Sorry, point of clarification. Can you just state his name? I couldn't hear his name.
Oh, sure. It's Raymond Verabo.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So this is a total private venture on their behalf, correct?
Correct.
This is not a public-private venture at all? It's not for the, like, it's not our responsibility to tell them what we'd like to see in the property? Is that correct? Or what we want? And I'm sort of wondering, why do they need us? Why do they need us to sign off on this request? Why can't they just go apply, basically? I understand that their, their requirements might ask for it, but what is it, what does it do for them? Like, why can't they just say, here's all of our information, we qualify for this? Why do they need the town council to say, yeah?
The, the way I understand it, working with your bond counsel, is that the Internal Revenue Service regulations in the Internal Revenue Code have a step process, and one step in that process is that Tefra hearing that you heard so much about? And in order for them to, to qualify for the tax-exempt financing that they're looking for, the Internal Revenue Code says they must go to the town or the municipality where they want to build or construct this project, just to at least get a recognition that this is going to be something that will benefit the citizens or the residents of the town.
Okay. So after we sign off, let's just say we have the public hearing, everything goes wonderfully, we sign off, we say this is great. What's our responsibility? Is it, is it our responsibility to make sure that they are staying within the 60% of AMI for the 40%?
I don't believe so. There, there's a reporting that we heard earlier that they, they have to file certain certificates to, to continue with, with that financing package. Although there was an offer made at, at least to some extent to involve the, the town of Groton for at least maybe the amenities or the construction, or just to see what's going on there, maybe to, to address the, the environmental issues, the green space that was mentioned. But there's absolutely no obligation on, on the part of the town of Groton to really do anything.
But like the green space and all that, that would be planning and zoning, correct?
Correct.
That's not like council?
Oh, no, no.
Okay. And then, well, I think, and I want to ask you, because this is new to me. It was just like when TIFF was first introduced to the community, it was very new, and there was a lot to it, and there was, it's very intricate. But this seems very simple, and it's just asking for our okay. And after we say okay, we're, we're sort of, our portion of the deal is done.
It's finished.
And they are moving on with the benefit of us saying thank you and welcome to the community kind of thing, correct? And my question is, is this the new way, because I've never really heard of this specific path, is this the way to lure affordable housing to Groton now in the future? To get affordable housing, to get workforce housing? Because typically, like, some of the properties we put out to bid, like town-owned properties, just say, we put out to bid, and it's just what the developer comes with. But this is also another way to seek affordable housing in our community. Is this correct?
Yes.
And this has been around for a while, but it's just becoming more popular now. Is that correct?
Correct. And in fact, the way I, the way I saw this in, in doing the research is that this isn't technically workforce housing as defined in the Connecticut general statutes. There's, there's an entire state program through the CHFA that would, would provide other types of financing, whether it be by grant or low-interest financing through, through them for what is defined as workforce housing, which is limited to certain jobs, for example, teachers, the, the police, firefighters, so that those fall within the workforce housing. This, this is not workforce housing. So, so that program would, would not be available to them. So they have to take advantage of the, of the Tefra.
Okay.
I was just going to add that Glenn Ryback, he is our bond attorney with Pullman and Comley, he said these have just started showing up recently, started their firm, seeing some going through in Connecticut, just in the, just recent past.
Okay. And let me ask you, do you plan on taking, applying for any of the opportunities within Groton for any kind of tax incentives or anything of that nature that's on our, like, Greater Groton Economic Development website that we offer here in Groton?
The time that we, the time to do that would have been pre-construction. It's, you know, it is not possible to do post-construction, and nor are we looking to, as I said before, you know, looking for any other benefit or grant or low-interest loan or anything along, along those lines, you know. We are a taxpayer, and we look to continue for the next 30 years at least to, to be a taxpayer and really to add to the community. And, you know, as far as green space, you know, we followed, you know, we had an ongoing discussion, and we committed to providing green space and taking out the hardscape. In addition to the green space that we planted and the requirements of the planning and zoning, we're adding a pickleball court instead of the parking lot, and we're also landscaping around, around that pickleball court as well. And so that was, as you said before, was a planning and zoning back and forth, and I think we came to both an agreeable understanding. And, you know, but part of, you know, what was not part of planning and zoning is, you know, our offer, and thank you for accepting our offer, is for the police substation. And, you know, we think that that would be a valuable element in, at that exit and also along Gold Star Highway.
Well, that sounds wonderful, because Groton loves pickleball. So I'm moving on. Council Borderline? Thank you.
Thank you. Can you just, like, explain some of the requirements of the bonding? Are you allowed to sell this off to a different LLC, say, in five, 10 years? Is there a requirement that you have to hold this for so long? Could you speak a little to that?
Sure. Council, council member, the, there is flexibility, the intent to prove the bond issue, there's a minimum 10-year holding period before you can refinance the project, for example. But it is, it is, we have no intention of, you know, part of somehow changing ownership to some other organization. It's possible there'd be a purchase by another entity over time, but as long as we're the owner, this will, and the bonds are outstanding, this would, this would be the deal. This would be fixed for the life of the time the bonds are outstanding, and Community Finance Corporation's entity is the, is the owner.
Okay, so the bonds, so if you, so you have to hold it for a minimum of 10 years, is what you're saying?
It's typically a restriction that you cannot refinance the property for a minimum of 10 years. So the intent is the, the minimum holding period is 10 years.
Got it. And then at the 10-year mark, you could sell off, and as long as you're able to pay off your bonds, then that would, the, the ownership could transition accordingly without the restrictions?
It's possible. Our hope is to own it for 30 years.
Right. And so if, at that point, though, at the 10-year mark, you did sell it off, it could be a completely different structure of housing. So, you know, I come in at 10, year 10, I pay you for this property, and you pay off your bonds, and now I could do something completely different at the site. Is that correct? There'd be no restrictions?
In a sense, the regulatory agreement, because it's recorded, would put that same restriction on the new owner, which would be why it'd be not particularly attractive to most owners. So that's, again, the benefit of that recorded regulatory agreement, because that runs with the land. And again, we, it's very unusual, you know, nonprofits are not in the business of trading assets or making a profit, quote unquote. I mean, our mission is to serve the community and, like I said, perfect that with the recorded regulatory agreement in this case.
Got it. And then, you know, just asking questions, not saying that you will or that your, your company or LLC is in any jeopardy whatsoever, but just asking, if a bankruptcy was to occur, what would happen to this, this agreement?
That's a great question. Typically, there's, the investors, the bondholders have the same question. So there's restrictions on the, the owner, the owner of this property will be a separate entity from the parent, as Community Finance Corporation will create a single-member limited liability company that will only own this asset. So in a sense, it's, the concept is it's bankruptcy remote. You know, we have 10 or 12 active projects. If something goes wrong with any one project, it doesn't cause a problem for the other project. So, but the bondholders have the same concern, so we're, we, the borrowing entity, the owner is restricted from seeking bankruptcy protection. And again, the idea is the bondholders would ultimately, through the trustee, who kind of holds all the funds for this project, would work through, would consider all options. But it's very unusual to have a bankruptcy proceeding on a municipal finance project, particularly housing, because there's such tremendous demand, particularly in this, in this area. But should something like that happen, it's, it's the investors, the bondholders, and the trustee work together to solve the problem.
Thank you for that explanation. And if you, okay, I think that answers. I'm just looking at my notes really quick here. I think that's pretty much what I have, you know, for my, my questions. I appreciate you answering those. My, oh, my last question. You had other properties and things where you've done this type of financing. What is your oldest property up and running to date, and where?
Let me think for a second. I believe that would be one of our student housing projects, which is located in downtown Phoenix, Arizona, Arizona State University Downtown Campus, which was a collaborative effort between the city and the university to react, you know, kind of redevelop, activate the northern part of the city, the downtown core of Phoenix. So it really kind of jump-started a lot of investments, a lot of, there's been a lot of follow-on multifamily housing, condo and rental properties in that area, light rail, all those other good things. So the students can commute back and forth between downtown campus and main campus in Tempe. So I think that's our oldest property at this point.
And how old would you say that is?
I believe that was 2008 was the original financing date.
And, and you operate under this one name? Or you said you have both two names, the LLC and then the protector?
Well, yes. I mean, there's, Community Finance Corporation is the nonprofit. Each property or each project we're involved in, we create a separate entity to be the owner of only that project. So it'll have a name, you know, that reflects, a simple name to reflect the community, and it's a disregarded entity. It has only one member, which is Community Finance Corporation. For the purposes we described. So it's just to hold this asset. It will, it will never own anything else but the property on Gold Star Highway.
All right. Well, thank you for explaining. I appreciate this, and I'm interested to see, I guess, my question through the, to the mayor or the town manager, when would we have to have a public hearing on this?
The motion on the table is for the October 29th. They have a 10-day notice period you have to publicize? Yes. So it's October 29th.
And how will this be publicized? Will it be in the paper, on our Facebook page? Where will we be putting this out?
It's required to be in the paper, but once we get a copy, we'll publicize it on our website and Facebook.
All right. No further questions. Thank you so much, and best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Russ? Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to take 10 seconds to say thank you. We need housing in Groton. We have a very, very high demand, and the only way that we are going to lower prices for apartments in this area is by increasing our supply. So thank you for reusing a space that could have just deteriorated and been lighted in our community. I encourage you to continue to look around, see what else you want to use, and thank you for choosing Groton.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, ma'am.
All right. I don't see any more hands. So I also would like to thank you and welcome you to Groton, and we're going to take a vote on your motion. So we have 2024-82099 Gold Star Highway, Public Finance Authority, setting a public hearing for October 29th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. That passes 6 to 0 to 0.
Point of clarification?
Thank you very much, and you have a good evening. Yes, your point of information?
Yes, I was just curious, so after this, the public hearing, and then do we have to vote again? Or how does this, I just want to put it in my notes.
No.
If you... If you look in your packet, you'll see there is a resolution that is the requested resolution. That will be discussed and have to be voted on by the Cowan Council following the public hearing. So yes, you do have to vote again.
Perfect, thank you, just want to, so we're just voting, thank you.
Just public hearing, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a good evening and thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
All right. Up next is 2024-826, the Conservation Commission Open Space Presentation. Good evening.
Good evening. Larry Dunn, Chair of the Conservation Commission.
All right, great. Are we going to put your presentation on the screen this evening?
Yes.
John's working on it again.
He's working on it. So while he's working on it, this is in response to a request from the town council to go into a bit more detail. We did put out a letter a month ago, which gave some of the statistics you'll see, but it was thin, if you will. And I know there were some questions on the color coding. Let's not pay a lot of attention to that because that's screenshots from the GIS database and there's 14 different layers, thus 14 different colors. So I'll provide the numbers and you've also been provided the access to the Conservation Commission Viewer, which has all the details in it and you can click on every parcel and see all the data. So if there's any confusion, my recommendation is go to the Viewer and get any question you want and pick any layer you want. So this is more of examples, but I'll, oh, there we go, which button? And then I must be right. There we go, okay. So I've already started.
This presentation, just to let everybody know, this presentation is in our pack and I believe it begins on page 51. Thank you.
So quick on objectives, definitions, and how we approach the inventory. And specifically to the request, there's a lot of questions on District 4, so the presentation has specifics on that district and it compares it to the other districts, just to zero in on that. And then there's some recommendations at the end. So, okay. So the objective today is to, since there's some new council members here, is just refresh on the role of the Conservation Commission. It's, I'm not going to review it and it's totally, it's in the back as an attachment, starting on page 14, so I won't go to that or even read that. But pretty much it's focused on the recording and reporting on open space within the town property. And that means everything, right, no matter who owns it. We have extended, the Conservation Commission has extended that work effort to index all town-owned property beyond that which is open space, for a whole variety of reasons. And it allows us to support the TOPE Committee and other things as well. I should point out that under the third point on recommendation of plans for development, et cetera, that we have in our, as of this year, we have kind of shifted the focus from acquisition to stewardship. So you'll probably hear a couple of comments on stewardship as we go through the presentation. The other thing that's, that we've done is worked with Barkberry and Parks and Rec to update and to synchronize town staff definitions, the conservation definitions, and the Parks and Recs definitions, so that we're all talking about the same parcel with the same definition in that. And that's now going through the approval process and I believe you've already seen that. And then lastly is, or most importantly, the current status of open space. Okay, now for the hard part. I've been through a number of years with the council and the question always comes up is, what is open space? And so my answer is, it depends, and I think I've heard the town manager say that, I've heard the director of planning say that, and it really is the case because, and I've listed here, if you look at the POCD, if you look at the Town Open Space Acquisition Fund Policy in 2004, if you look at zoning, if you look at the Public Act, look at state definitions, there are a lot of definitions of open space. And so what we've tried to do is to sort through that, and I will admit, this is a four-year effort, it's not done lightly. And let me go to the next chart and explain why. There are 528 different parcels and easements within the scope of this work. And it's not static, it changes. So we've been trying to keep track of that. As I mentioned, that over the, over time, we've developed a database or created a database because it was the only way to really put some sense around here and be able to slice and dice it. And for the purposes of town council questions, we now can slice and dice and give the answer to the question that you want versus our definition. You're going to get our definition anyway, but you have the option for other ones. Now, some of the key characteristics in the database are listed on this chart here and you'll notice one of them is the voting district, which is one of the things we're going to drill down into today. There's a lot of different information. The key, one of the key ones certainly for open space is the protection and legal status details. In order to determine that, you have to read the deed. And some of these deeds date from a long time ago. So I should mention that Tom Olson spent many hours in the records department of the town trying to figure this out and it just took a very long time. And the other individual would be, as we worked with the town IT department, Noah Feldman, to really create the Viewer database. So it's been a collaborative effort across the functions of the town. Now, the last page of the deck, which is the confusing one with the colors, shows 14 different layers. As I mentioned before, there's different attributes and some of those are depending on, it's more on who owns it, so it's city-owned, state-owned, it's Parks and Recs with facilities, without facilities, et cetera, et cetera. So that's why it gets, gets a little complicated when you ask a question about how much it is, but I'm going to give it a shot. So, next page, got to keep up. So what we've done from the Conservation Commission, and that was the first six months when I was on the commission, we debated what the definition of open space was, it kind of zeroed in on utilizing the state definition of protected and preserved. And so this chart shows those definitions. Certain reserved rights, that means the easements that are there. As I mentioned bef, well, maybe I didn't mention how many easements, but we've got about 71 easements that are recorded. Those are not accessible by the public because they're on private property, but they are protected, you know, protected lands legally. And the exception on the Viewer is we have not yet included easements or the IT department hasn't put easements in the Viewer because it's taking a parcel and subdividing the parcel to which is an easement and which is not an easement, but the total parcel is still owned by, you know, the landlord of record. So it's a daunting task and it will, we'll get there over time. So we provide the data and the data, we have a separate database for easements, so we can provide that information, but that's not available in the Viewer as of today. On the preserved open space, that's where you find the crossover interconnection with the Parks and Rec inventory that I mentioned earlier. So you really have those two definitions that we've been using because we believe it's important that any land that we deem open space doesn't change every time there's an election of a new town council. So there's a core requirement that you'd have to go through, I mean, we just went through when we built the school and that was a kerfuffle that we had to go through. And that's there for a reason, so that it really takes energy to change the, that one wasn't working.
We're swapping you out.
I wore out a mic. All right, so, and it's really, that's the purpose of it, is to make it difficult. It's not impossible, but it makes it difficult to alter open space property, which is, you know, our focus. All right, the next chart is, we took the, out of that database and the cut was protected and preserved parcels, and we overlaid the voting district on there. So you see the upper left-hand, well, I guess I don't have, do I have a pointer on this? No pointer? No pointer, okay. Upper left-hand corner, you'll see the number four for that district, and the other districts are there. So it's difficult when you look at a map to kind of get a sense of what's there, so, which is why we provide some data. So on the next chart, we have open space as a percentage of the town area and the town area that we're utilizing is 20,377 acres. So when you look at protected, easements, preserved, the total open space is 6,000 acres, which is 29.5%, and I think that number was quoted for at a prior meeting. The federal objective is 30%, so we're kind of there, which is again why we've, we shift, we want to shift to stewardship and to make sure that the lands we do have aren't degraded. And what happens is when you get invasive species or other things, it really takes the value, whether it's carbon dioxide, whether even the ability to walk the land goes down. So that's why stewardship is important. Accessibility is, as I'll get to in a second, right now. When you look at accessible open space, so there are certain things excluded and the number here is, should be 20, it should be 20.4%, and I apologize for, for that error. But you take out schools, the protected easements, as I mentioned earlier, you can't walk those, take out cemeteries, the public reservoir, which is a big chunk in the middle, and there are town parcels without trails or recreational facilities, and so we excluded that. And we spent time with the town staff to make sure that we had agreement on the definition of accessible open space. And then we wanted to make sure that when you go to the town website and try to say is where can I go in the town, that we're really limiting it to those accessible places. And some of, some of the things you don't want people to walk on because either A, they're not walkable or they're fragile environments, et cetera. So that's, that statistic.
Point of information? I'm sorry, the accessible open space on our, in our paperwork says 23.5%, but you corrected that.
Should be 20.4.
Thank you very much.
Apologize for that. It's correct on the next page. All right, so, well, not the next page, again, trying to be helpful and sometimes being helpful didn't work in terms of the color map, but accessible versus not accessible and that kind of just shows what I just said on the table form and graphics form and where it is. But that's also hard to view, so provide a table. So on page 10, you'll see the table. This kind of lays out and gets to the question that was asked before, is that G, is District 4 underrepresented? Well, when you look at protected and preserved total acres, they're not underrepresented, and I'll explain in a little bit about why. It's about, a little bit above average, so it's not, doesn't look that bad. However, when you look at the percent of the district accessible, it is the lowest at 13%. And there's, there's a few reasons for that and, go to the next chart. Because, as we say, District 4 is unique. So there is a total area of 5,296 acres in that district. Now, the federal government controls 900 acres. State controls 271 acres. The city of Groton owns, or controls 1,041 acres. So when it gets down to what the town of Groton specifically controls, you're kind of left with 435 acres. So it's, there's, you only have so much you can play with to make it accessible, which I think is the real metric, not how much land there is, but how much is accessible in terms of the question of District 4. So the total area that's government-controlled is about half the district. And the accessible open space is 13% of the district. Now, having said that, then we took a look at it and said, well, what could you do to improve the accessibility in District 4, which I believe was the question on the table from the last meeting? And there's, we identified four actions, three of which don't cost money, cost time and effort, but not money. So the first one is, there are some, we identified three, town-owned properties which currently is not accessible, which you could address. All right, now that would, well, I guess it would cost money because you'd have to make them accessible and therefore, you know, investment in trails and potential cleanup. The second action is to negotiate open space on state-owned property, specifically Gunji Wab. And there's been a couple of tries, but that, you know, might be something to do. And there are historical significant aspects to that property, so some of that you don't want people to, to access, but other areas certainly can be. So we've really struggled and had discussions about how do you keep people off of a piece of it but not off another piece? To be determined, but that is certainly something that one could look at. The third one is negotiate the open space on city-owned property, right, again, which is working with our partners in the city to go after that. And some of that has to do with Groton Utilities and reservoir lands. Now, we did take a whack at that with, or at least the Tri-Town Trail Group took a whack at that to try and get a bike through there, unsuccessful, but, you know, one could, one shouldn't give up because it is probably the best greenway improvements that one could do. And again, you don't have to buy any land, you just have to get access to it. Now, there's also the ability to go after and acquire, now we're spending money for acquisition on private properties, and there's 97 parcels, 1,000 acres, et cetera, et cetera, in the PA 490 program. So that kind of, there's some minor degree of protection, but it really is minor because one could just get out of a 490 program at the drop of a hat and for very little expense. So it's, it's interesting, but, you know, don't consider that to be protected property. And that basically kind of wraps up the presentation. Questions?
Oh, you skipped the very colorful map.
I, I did that on purpose. I figured that was going to get me in trouble.
I think we should show the very colorful map that you had discussed. It's on page 20 if that's possible.
Yeah, okay.
Uh-oh.
Now.
Oh. There we go.
I wasn't touching it.
Why isn't it?
There we go.
Okay. So I mentioned before, that's the map of the Viewer and it was a screenshot and there's 14 layers and every layer has a different color. So it's much easier to go into the Viewer, which you have access to, to select the layer you're interested in and then down-select in specific parcels and get all the information, the database of those parcels.
Oh, no, just seeing it on the screen, I can now tell it what the colors mean and they match, because they don't match when you actually print them out. The colors are not the same. So now I, I get it now. Thank you. All right, going to open up to questions. Anybody have any questions?
Mayor, should I close out the presentation?
You can, that'd be great. Thank you. Councilor Guyaski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you Chair Dunn, and I know you worked with, well, with Commissioner Olson, doing a lot of research over these years and I'm greatly appreciated of it. I've geeked out a little bit, had a conversation with Commissioner Olson about it a couple of weeks ago when he was here in the audience of the meeting. My first question is, am I understanding that the percentage, what do you, do you have an estimate of what the percentage of town-owned land that is developable, that's not developable, that hasn't been developed yet, but can be? Let me rephrase that. I didn't understand that.
The answer is yes.
The answer is yes. And back to the thing that we have the database there, and it's a question of just sorting on town-owned land that is, you know, available for development, and Mr. Meyer is here? But, you know, that certainly can be provided, and I believe in the TOPE Committee, we actually did get a whack at that, and I provided that, those statistics in that, in that committee.
And as a Conservation Commission, have you been made aware of any potential future donations to the town or protection by outside groups through the mayor?
There, there's always activity and actions going around. I would say that, from a formality point of view, we have not been formally asked as the Conservation Commission for a position at any particular parcel, other than Birch Creek Golf Course, which was done by Drive State Assembly Blumgartner. So we did respond, and I think the town was copied on that, yeah, the town was copied on that response. So the answer would be, other than that, there hasn't been any official request to the Conservation Commission.
And could you elaborate a little bit more on the Birch Creek Act?
Well, that's a private, you know, that's a defunct golf course, in essence, so it's flat with, you know, open areas, and then there's a surrounding, I think about 20, 25 percent, there's trees and what I would call more open-space type of characteristics versus just a old golf course. So there has been some discussions, it is on the market for what I consider to be of very high value. So that was our, our analysis was, it's been idle for how many years now? Probably at least 10?
It was, I've been here seven years, and I think it was just wrapping up what I had here.
Yeah, so, you know, so it's been idle, and it's developable, but a portion of it's developable, because there are some areas of wetlands, but there's been nobody's interest in doing that, and it didn't seem, it's not high val, you know, a golf course is not high value from a conservation point of view, right, from carbon dioxide, sequestration and other things. I mean, there's a, I don't know if you could provide the letter again with that analysis to the counselor, if you would, John?
Yeah, about five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Manager Burke, for agreeing to forward that to me. And then, could you explain the PA 490 Forest Program? If I'm, so my understand, my understanding of this is that it is protected forest land that cannot be developed at any other time, or it's just been protected by a private owner? Is that my, is that?
It's, yeah, first of all, it's private ownership. There's a requirement that there's a minimum of 25 acres to apply, so it's, you know, bigger, bigger parcels. And it's really a tax benefit to the, it's an incentive for the landowner to not develop it. But the way they structured it is that it's a decreasing penalty over time. So after a number of years, the amount that you, like, the payout, you know, developer claims, does I want to buy it? Can I get out of it? Yes. Then there, but there's a quote penalty, but the penalty is vanishingly small, so after 10 years, it's almost nothing. But, so there's an incentive to not develop it, but it's a very weak incentive, in my opinion.
I thank you for your expertise on that. And then, I do want to highlight some of your numbers in the presentation you made. The percentage of land that was open space accessible, I just want to read this into the record, for District One, it's 33 percent, for District Two, it's 21 percent, for District Three, it's 8 percent, for District Four, it's 13 percent, for District Five, it's 21 percent, for District Six, it's 26 percent, and District Seven, it's 34 percent. And then, I just kind of want to interject my opinion here, using the accessibility map that you put on Council Packet 59, Presentation Page Number Nine. Most of the open space of District Six, Seven, and Five that is accessible is on the east side of town, and that west side of town has not as much accessible open space. So it would be, in my opinion, if the council were to preserve any land, not saying, we are, not saying we're not, should be my opinion, that the west side of town should be prioritized in that, and that there is a lot of open space on the east side of town. And thank you, Mr. Dunn, for coming, and Madam Mayor, you'll be back.
Thank you. All right, well, I have some questions.
Oh.
Can we put the map back up by any chance?
Which one?
I'd like to be on page 57, and then I want to compare it to 59.
Which map is it?
Can we go to the one on page 57, please? The one with the pink and green, or purple and green?
Yeah, this is the presentation, not the, oh, you're doing that.
I think it's back two more pages. There we go.
Okay, Protected and Preserved, yes.
All right, so I'm looking at District Four, and over by where the Thames River is, there's a pink area there, and it's right, seems to be up against the water area in District Four. It says that that is preserved area, and when I went to the other page, that's publicly accessible or publicly open space, that, nothing is marked there at all. So I'm not, do you know what property that is, and what?
Head to viewer, I click on it. I did, let's see, did I?
Because you're also, you had mentioned that there's improved access on town-owned properties, and it says Maple Glen or Pleasant Valley Road North, 20 acres, Pamela Avenue, Fleet Bank Open Space, 15.4 acres.
Yep.
And Military Highway, 2.4 acres.
That might be it, I.
I just don't know which, what it is.
Yeah. That's a good ques, like I said.
Mr. Burke, do you have any clue?
Fairview, I'm here. Madam Mayor.
That's Fairview, you think, and it goes all the way down to the water?
Yes, ma'am.
So that's Fairview.
It probably only goes down to Military Highway. What is the, where are the railroad tracks?
Gotcha. And then I was just trying to figure out, like, the Pleasant Valley Road North, which is 20.5 acres, I was just sort of trying to figure out where that might be. I was just trying to figure, because it, when you look at the two and you compare this map, and then you go to what's accessible and not accessible with the red lines in it?
Yep.
Sometimes it's a little confusing, because some things drop off and they disappear, and then I'm like, I can't.
Well, the overlap of the red lines kind of hide the reservoir, the water in there that doesn't, that's why I said I don't like the map per se and the colors, because you kind of can't see some of it unless you get very specific or take a layer at a time.
Right. And, because I think one of the, the issues over in District Four, besides wanting some trails, which I think opening up Gunjiwamp would be wonderful, but on the other hand, I think preserving what's in there is so special, and I also think if you walk through there and you don't know what you're looking for, you'll miss it, and it could get damaged, because you don't even know what.
Yes.
You might be stumbling over.
Right.
Because I've taken the tour with Pequot Seapace, you know, Nature Preserve, and I thought it was amazing, and I would have missed all of it if they had not pointed it out to me. A lot of special stuff in there. But I do think it would be nice for them to have some trails on their side, but I, what we're also looking for, especially over, sort of near the Thames Riverside, as you can see on page 59 of that report, there's a lot missing to the, to the west, I would think, of, what is it, Route 12? Am I right? Is it west of Route 12? Is that what I'm saying? There's not much there.
There's not much there. I mean, you really got three properties copped, there's an Avalonia one and a Boulder Heights. Everything else is a little tiny thing, so you're, I agree. I mean, saying is that that is the lowest accessible area.
Mayor, just letting you know, Counselor Parker's here.
Counselor Parker, it is 812, and Counselor Parker has rec. And is there, so I understand trails, that's usually much larger, but for parks, you can do small parks, neighborhood parks, they could be on a very small piece of property, even like a half acre. Is that correct? I mean.
Well, that's correct, and I defer to Mark Berry in terms of Parks and Rec. When you get into that, you know, what's applicable or supported by that.
Right.
So we do kind of separate the two.
Gotcha. All right, but I think this is wonderful information, very informative, and it gave me a lot to look at last night, and a lot of flipping of pages back and forth and looking at, you know, acres and percentages, and you've given us a lot of data here to consume. So I thank you so much for that. Counselor Bordelain?
Thank you. Thank you for presenting, and I appreciate some of this. It's some of the stuff that we talked about in the Property Use Committee a little bit, you had brought in all those different grids and things, and, you know, talked about the different parcels of land, so I do appreciate this. When you look at the voting districts, when you reference the different areas of percent of District accessibility, I was in District Two, but recently moved to District Three. I'm sorry, went from three to two, but I'm right on the three line, literally, like, I could step one foot over and I'm there. I'm also only a few feet over from being on the town line, being in the city, so I'm kind of like right in that middle spot. District Two, I mean, District Three has the lowest percent, if I'm reading this correctly. Is that correct?
That is correct, but as the city.
Yes.
Owned, I didn't want to come with recommendations to this, to this council.
No, no, I just think it's important, I think, you know, as we focus on that, and I hope that we can build some form of partnerships with the city, because that 8 percent is very low for District Three and very concerning. So I hope to seek, you know, with the, the numbers in District Three being as low as they are, even lower than District Four, that we maybe work out some type of partnership or plan to look at ways to make sure folks in District Three are properly having accessibility. I appreciate you presenting. I mean, for me, it's just pretty much the obvious stuff that, you know, has been stated before, as a person who follows this, so I thank you for that. But I do think, you know, again, it's, it's important to have the open space and accessibility. I, the Tri-Town Trail and Legerd, I'm a big supporter of all of that, and the biking and the accessibility paths, it was unfortunate to see that some of those trails got denied to kind of link all of that stuff together. But I do think there is opportunities here to work collaboratively as a community. We definitely, in the last 15, 20 years, have moved away from making sure parks were more accessible to each neighborhood, and I think that's very vital to our growth and development and allowing for that. So I don't have any further questions, I just thank you for presenting, and I'm a firm believer, believer in leaving things that are green, green, because once they're gone, you can't get them back. So thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you. Counselor Ress?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much for your presentation. If we can look at District Four, I just have a couple of questions. You have some recommendations to improve access on town-owned property. When you talk about Maple Glen on Pleasant Valley Road North, that's in that neighborhood, I'm sorry, I don't, I think I've only been by there twice. I didn't even know it was there, I was like searching for town-owned property. It's like up on the hill, right before Military Housing, correct? So like, close to where Michigan is in that area. When you say there's 20.5 acres, and we had talked about 669 acres of accessible acres, are all 20 of those acres accessible, accessible? I can't say that word well.
Well, by including as a recommendation, we're saying it's not accessible.
Okay, so that seems like an easy fix, like, we've already got a park there, so to move forward with a little bit of that. I did not know there was open space on Pamela Avenue. Is that at all used, or it's just town-owned property?
Not to my knowledge. Now, I will point out that local residents sometimes use property, but we don't include that into our numbers, is where there's some, some sense of formal trails that the town supports.
So there's no trails on there, there's no parkscape, there's nothing on there? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Berry. Got Mr. Berry in the background. And then, the Military Highway, 2.4 acres, that is basically like across from the subbase exit up on the hill?
Yeah, it's over, yeah.
It's right across from the entrance to the.
Okay, all right, just so I know what, what I'm talking about. And when we look at the purple and green map, if we don't mind looking at that one, purple and green.
Okay.
I'm sorry, page seven of the presentation, page 57 of our packet. The big purple space going all the way up to Legerd, that is Groton Utilities territory, correct? The green.
In the middle, yeah, going, yes.
Yes, yes. What is the green, is that cop?
That's, yeah.
Okay. And then the green above cop?
That is, there's an Avalon, if there's an Avalonia property, I had that highlighted on the map someplace. Oh, Great Brook, there's a little splotch of green above cop, which is Great Brook property.
Okay, and then to the left of that is Gunjiwamp, and then the school, correct? And then there's something in Military Housing off Gunjiwamp, closer to Route 12?
Yeah, well, you got, I guess Boulder Heights is the green splotch near the highway, and.
Boulder Heights is the furthest north, correct?
Furthest south, yeah.
Okay.
No, Boulder Heights is down.
Down, right below the highway.
That is Gunjiwamp.
That's not the school?
No, that's Gunjiwamp.
You need to state, yeah.
The school is right here.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I, I just wanted a better understanding of what these parcels were, and I would say an advocacy of District Three, because that is my neighborhood, you are missing Thames View Park, so there's a little bit more. But yes, we do need more green space in District Three. Thank you for the clarification, I appreciate it.
Counselor Parker, your hand is raised, would you like to speak? Counselor Parker, you might be muted.
I'm fine.
There you go, I think we can hear you.
Oh.
I just lost her.
And she's gone.
Thank you, I'm, oh.
Counselor Parker, can you hear us?
I can hear you, I'm just driving, so.
Okay, well, we have you arriving at the meeting at 8:12 PM.
That's fine, I have nothing to say, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bordelain?
Um, I guess my question, for the mayor to the town manager, some of those town-owned properties, is there anything that, you know, would it be something like another agenda item to talk about how to, you know, basically on a low budget or no budget, make some of those properties accessible, or ways that we could enhance some of that space that's kind of there, that could be potentially used by folks to kind of walk on or whatever?
Certainly it could, I would just need, I'd go on a first-touch base with Director Berry, and then we can come to speak a little further on it, let me learn a little bit more about those properties.
Okay. To Counselor Guyaski, didn't cause my time, but thank you.
Point of information, my apologies, Counselor Bordelain, I will.
No, it's, I won't be using all the time, no apology needed.
Okay, sorry.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Thank you, yep. I do think it would be great, I don't know if it needs to be an agenda item or a referral, you know, if there's property there that can be used as, you know, passive, you know, recreation that we can use for walking and, you know, take advantage of those opportunities, it'd be great to know. So I guess, would I have to send a referral for the town to present, like, ways in which we could be using that as passive recreation spots for the community?
Parks on District Four is a goal of this council, so it is things that we can bring forward to our agenda, and we have been asking Parks and Rec to be working on some priorities.
um, some priorities and some suggestions, and we have, we have already sent some work over to them in the past that they've been working on.
My understanding, you can still make a referral that's not part of a priority as well.
It's already a, it's already a goal and a priority, so it should come to the council as soon as we get information.
Right.
If you want to put in a referral, by all means, you may.
Well, I might have different referrals, is what I'm saying, so...
By all means, you may, you may submit one.
All right, thanks, I was just wondering what the challenge was. Um, I think it's important that we look at this, um, in a way that's comprehensive, um, and look at ways to enhance, and I do think, um, I could put a referral in maybe as to speak with the city, perhaps, to have them around the table, John, I know the mayor, the city mayor, and you have a good working relationship with him, um, is there any way we could maybe bring him around to see if there's some way to help enhance District Three?
I think that would be a council decision, if we, um, as a whole, would like to do such.
Again, I would make it as a referral, if you would allow me just to speak. I would make it as a referral, and the council could then vote on it, and it could move forward if they got the votes. So it would be a referral requesting to have a joint meeting with the city mayor to talk about, um, open space for District Three. So that would be my referral, that's my verbal request, and I will also, I'll put it in Is that a fair way to do it, I guess through the mayor to the town manager?
I believe the town council rules actually require it in writing unless you have an agenda item already on the agenda. I believe so, I'd have to double-check, but...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I believe the council rules require it in writing upfront, I think there's actually a laid-out required process, so I think it has to go in writing first.
I don't believe that that's a rule, can you just point me in that direction, then?
It is a rule, it's in our rules.
That we have to write them out now? We can't verbally state them?
It is in our rules, you are welcome to say it at a council meeting, but you must also follow up with an email...
Perfect.
...to the town manager with your referral in writing.
Perfect, I'll just verbally state that I will send that referral to request the support of the council to, uh, look at District Three's, um, you know, percentage of accessible, uh, open space land, so, um, thank you, and I'll send that tonight. Thank you.
Counselor McBride?
Yep, thank you, I'll make it quick, I just want to thank you for this presentation, it was very thorough and informative, so I appreciate that. I just have one question. You mentioned about the state, and I, it was helpful to see the differentiation between the open space and the accessible open space, so that was very helpful for me, um, and you gave the state recommendation thirty percent open space. My question is, does the state provide any percentage in terms of, because I'm assuming the open space that Connecticut uses as their definition is our definition is open space. So my question is, do we know if the state has any definition of what percentage accessible open space is, that we could determine if our 20.4% is within...
Well, they have preserved and protected at 21%. Uh, I don't recall they have anything on accessible versus not accessible. So it's, it's, I think it's the higher level, just preserved and protected.
Okay. That was all, great presentation, thank you.
Okay, seeing no more hands. Thank you so much for coming out, a lot of information, a lot to digest, I thank you so much, it was great.
All right, uh, thank you, and, uh, we're here to serve.
Thank you. Forty years of getting to this point where the whole list of these, that you said, all your work, thank you so much. Up next is 2024-830, Calvin Borough Scoreboard Replacement. This is on page seventy-one of our packet. Um, Counselor Russ, would you like to take this one?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Um, Item 2024-830, Calvin Borough Scoreboard Replacement. Make a motion to recommend a resolution for the expenditure of $4,106 from the general fund contingency account for the replacement of the scoreboard at Calvin Borough's Field.
Second.
Moved by Russ, seconded by Gajewski. I'd also like to disclose that my husband is the president of Granton Little League. He does not get paid, we have no financial interest, um, other than volunteering numerous hours for our community. So, good evening, would you like to give us a synopsis here?
Yes, good evening, Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation. Uh, the issue in front of the council this evening is will the council approve funding for the replacement of a scoreboard at Calvin Borough's baseball field. Uh, the request has come from Granton Little League to replace the scoreboard. Due to the scoreboard's age, replacement parts are no longer available. Uh, they did go out and get a quote, uh, the quote that we received is, um, matches what, uh, the, the scoreboard that they're asking for is identical to the scoreboard that they have now, so they're not asking for any, uh, you know, any enhancements to, uh, to the field other than just replacing the scoreboard. Uh, the quote that, that was sent to me is actually $1,200 less than what's on their, on the website, the manufacturer's website, so I, I think the quote that they got is a pretty, is a pretty good deal. Town purchasing requirements, uh, we would have to get three quotes, so if we did find a comparable scoreboard that came in less, we would not necessarily have to use, uh, the, the $4,106. So, uh, my recommendation is that, um, the council approve the expenditure of $4,106 from general fund contingency for the replacement of the scoreboard at Calvin Borough's Field.
May I ask you just a very quick question, for a point of information? With the $4,100, we'll cover the cost of the scoreboard, will, what about the actual installation, and will you need funds for that as well?
Uh, no, we don't need some funds for that. I spoke with Director Hanover, and he had his staff look at what it would take, and he felt that the public works staff had the capability of taking out the old and putting in the new.
Thank you. Counselor Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question for the town manager through the mayor, um, this is coming out of the contingency account that was like roughly, I think, $250,000 in this year's budget, correct?
Uh, yeah, I believe it was.
Okay.
We've not used any yet.
Okay, so that, I just wanted to make sure that I had an idea what the money was, I just, because it says general fund contingency, and I wanted to make sure it wasn't the general fund and the contingency account, I was a little confused about, so I just wanted to confirm that. Go back, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Our hand was up. Counselor Bordelain, did you have anything you would like to say?
Um, no, my hand is not up, thank you.
Well, thank you. Counselor Pacino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the mayor, um, I'm looking at that first picture, uh, and I'm wondering, is there going, is there going to be any electrical upgrades to, to maintain, to go from one to the other?
That's a great question that I can't answer.
Okay.
But again, public works reviewed it.
Yeah, public works did, right, I was, public works did look at it, and I, I think if there was an issue about the electricity, it would have been identified.
That's fair.
Okay, I will say that from volunteering with many of you here, actually, at the snack shack at Calvin Boroughs, that standing in the snack shack and looking out at the scoreboard that is there, it's very difficult to see what the score is and how many outs there are, it's very difficult to read the scoreboard, um, and tell if it's an eight or a six, and it's very difficult, so I think this is wonderful. Um, all right, so I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Abstentions? Counselor Bordelain, I didn't see your vote?
It's a aye.
Thank you. That passes seven to zero to zero. Up next is 2024-836, Grant Writer and Administrator Position and Job Description. And to be honest with you, it's 8:30, and I really would like to take a small break if that's possible.
Small break if that's possible.
What was that? Just feedback. All right, I'm getting feedback, I think, from you, Counselor Parker. So let's take a little break, um, we'll come back at, in about ten minutes. Thank you.[1221.95]
I'm just going to read the motion.
Yep.
Okay. Item 2004-836, Grant Writer and Administrator Position and Job Description. Motion to recommend a resolution to approve the new full-time, non-union position of Grant Writer and Administrator with the range of $72,563 to $1,588 and the job description for the position.
I assume move?
I assume move.
Second. All right, move by Pacino, second by Rossk.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Arneisha Green, HR Director, Risk Management. We also have...
John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development.
So you have seen us here fairly recently for the same topic or an iteration of the same topic. I'm going to just do a brief overview of the write-up. If you recall, we were here prior because we had a vacancy that was formerly known as the ARPA Court Meter. And we came before you to discuss updating the title. It was going to go back out. It was approved up until the end of December 31st, 2026, and we did put it out for recruitment process. We had it out for a few weeks. We got a rather small selection, I would say, of responses, and in the end, it didn't pan out. So going back to the drawing board, our creative director here, we had some conversations about what are the outstanding needs of the town and what might be a good fit based on where we're at currently. So this iteration is technically a request for a new position, but I would say that there already is a position that exists and budgeted funds for it, and this is ARPA money. So this position would be a combination. The thought process is that for the remainder of this fiscal year, ARPA funds would fund it. And it would have a focus of really the implementation of ARPA, and Director Reiner can talk about that a bit, as well as opportunity to support largely Public Works in opportunities should they arise for grants. And as I recall, I've heard during the council discussions here and there about the possibility of interest of a grant writer. So it seemed like a good opportunity to combine both items. Moving into the next fiscal year, the plan would be for, is it 50/50? 50/50 funds between ARPA and general fund money. And the position would also shift as well its focus to take on more of a part of the actual grant-writing part and have a partnership with other departments, primarily Public Works. So that is a brief overview. And if you would like to add anything?
I just want to point of privilege. It was only just unmuted less than a second ago. I missed the whole first half. I tried to message in, but nobody was responding, so.
Okay. Would you like them to repeat what they had to say? I think mostly what they said was in our packet with the description.
I just asked that if we're going to do this virtual that we make sure things are unmuted and that you make sure when you come back from a recess, you just expect that we all can hear, because it wasn't unmuted after. So sitting here, and nobody obviously is checking their phones because we're in a meeting, so that's all.
Thank you.
Okay. I had just basically done an overview of what was written out, and I was offering an opportunity for Director Reiner to add on to anything that I might have missed.
You covered it pretty well. Happy to answer any questions. And, you know, again, it's the ARPA Coordinator position, which then got changed to the Grant Writer position. It was a temporary position, and we think because of that, we weren't getting really good recruitment from it. There's still a very big need to continue to manage the ARPA program. You know, we have two-plus years still of, there's a lot of projects that are still going through. We need to document that, manage all that paperwork. You know, getting the grant is, we often look at it as, yes, we got the grant. Okay, what's next? It's like, then we got to do the grant. And there's still a lot of that kind of doing happening, and that's really why the focus the first year is still 100% ARPA. And then we think, you know, year two, it can be that 50/50 split to start going after some other grants, helping... There's a lot of money out there federally, state level, that we just aren't going for because we don't have the staff capacity to apply for it. And then, once we get it, we'll figure out the best way to manage it.
Thank you. Councilor McBride, I believe you had the referral in for a grant writer. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Did you want to speak on this?
I'll just briefly say I'm in full support of it. I appreciate this coming forward to the council. The only question I had, and I think you answered it, was ARPA this year, the six months remaining, and the next year, half and half. Will any ARPA be used in fiscal '27, those six months? Or will that be all new general fund?
I think we'll look at if it's still during, it'll still be during that prior to December 31st, 2026. I'm just trying to keep calendar years and fiscal years straight in my head. So that year, when we go forward through the budgetary process, if there's still a lot of people who are going on with ARPA, we might say, yeah, let's do 25%, because then it would really be half of that portion of the year.
Understood.
But I think, you know, we can discuss that with what, you know, the pulse of the council.
Okay. How many positions are now in the Grant Division of your department?
Well, I don't have a Grants Division.
Correct.
Maybe I'm calling it what I should, but how many grant-related employees within your department?
Well, right now, different folks, if we have bandwidth, will apply for grants. So, for example, at one point in time, my Economic Development Specialist position had applied for the Community Challenge Grant. That was the, I think, $6.8 million grant that we got from the state DECD. We got through the paperwork on that, and we're soon are going to have to start implementing that one. And that's going to be one of those, oh, all right, how do we manage this project from a bandwidth perspective? In the past, Megan Granato, our Sustainability and Resiliency Manager, has been applying for a lot of grants because we had other projects that we had matching funds for. So there are some really good opportunities. So, I mean, she's probably been the biggest grant person in the recent past, although that one DECD grant that we received was very substantial. Also, as I think about it, our Planner Two that focuses on housing and community development, really our CDBG program, will help write and administer the CDBG grant. So those are kind of the three people that will play within that realm as time allows. But we don't have any one person that is specific to grants. Formerly, the ARPA Coordinator was a position that was put together solely to manage the ARPA program.
Okay. This position will be solely focused on grants, though?
This position would, yeah, year one would be focused on ARPA, managing the existing grant and the implementation of some of those as people need help. And then, kind of, once we get into the second year of that, we'd be looking to help and partner with, you know, Public Works, because there's a lot of, like, federal transportation money out there, and there's a lot of other economic development and planning-type grants that we just haven't had the bandwidth to apply for over the time.
No, thank you. I'm in full support. I appreciate it coming forward.
Thank you. Councilor Kajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I remember supporting this when Council McBride made the referral with then-Councilor Franco, but now Mayor Franco. I'm full support of this. The only question I have through the mayor is, could you, do you have an estimated financial timeline of when this position will be fully funded by the town and not ARPA money?
All right, right now, we're in...
Yeah, the transition, so the rest of this fiscal year, which is June 30th of next calendar year, will be all ARPA. And then, June 30th of '25, or 7/1/25 to 6/30/26, which will be FY '26, will be partly funded. So I think it's winding down.
It may be a quarter for one more year.
Yeah. All right, that's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I was wondering, because this is like a non-union job. We've heard throughout time here in the town about people trying to get people to work here, to stay here, to make sure we're paying the right salaries. Is there any benefits special to this job? Because it's different, it's probably a unique position in our town departments, I would say. It's not like they have to deal with customers, they're not dealing with...
Stakeholders.
Right, stakeholders. But they're not, like, at the desk getting permits and applications and things of that nature, or going out and... Is there possibilities for them to have flex hours or to have remote work or hybrid? Or is there other things that would be enticing? Because you've already put it out once, it didn't pan out, and we're still, we're back at the drawing board again. Is there anything that we could add to this? Or is it flexible enough that, if necessary, the way it's written? Because, I mean, I saw it in there, it said something to the effect of, just, the work environment is that of a typical business office setting, occasional weather conditions when visiting off-site locations, the noise level, blah, blah, blah. But is that sort of gentle enough that you could maybe make some, if necessary, make some adjustments to that?
I think there's a couple of things to consider about the way it was posted last time. The last one had a much narrower range because it was very specific around ARPA funding and the rules. This is going to be the full expanded range based on the new salary ranges that we did. So that's one plus. It's going to look very different. The, I think that's a primary. The other item is that it's not limited term. Many folks are not quite interested in something that has an end date. So I think that's two things that the position already has going for it.
Okay.
As far as uniqueness, there are quite a few unique positions, I would say, within the non-union group, and we try to honor and support them all. And we have revamped on the website, really, things to focus on that really most of town folks have anyway, but what the benefits are. There are caveats for flexibility, but I want to be mindful that this is part of a whole non-union group. So we need to be thinking about what does everybody have access to in that non-union group versus carving this out very specifically to identify one specific different item for it. So that's my perspective, thinking globally versus, you might have a little bit of a different perspective from a department, but I have to look at the global total rewards and how we're putting that out there.
Very understood.
And they get to work with a super cool department, too. That's a benefit that just is out there.
Who wouldn't want to come to work every day?
Yes.
Well, I appreciate that. And I just wanted to see, like, if there's anything else we could do to offer any kind of flexibility to make sure that you can try and get this position filled. And I think that you've made some valid arguments there to support this. So I thank you, and I wish you all the best on this. And I don't see any more hands, so we'll take a vote on 2024-836, Grant Writer and Administrator Position and Job Description. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Abstentions?
I would say aye.
Thank you. Passes seven to zero to zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Up next, 2024-827, Cannabis Tax Revenue Disbursement Discussion. This is in our packet on page 78. I'll just give sort of a little background here. I'll read from the packet. It says, "The Connecticut Public Act 21-1 allows for the sale of recreational cannabis and stipulates the collection of a 3% municipal tax on sales to be given to the local municipality. Funds received from the municipal tax include..."
We're gonna do this virtual that we make sure things are unmuted and that you make sure when you come back from a recess, you just expect that we all can hear because it wasn't unmuted after. So sitting here and nobody obviously is checking their phones because we're in a meeting. So that's all.
Thank you.
Okay. I had just basically done an overview of what was written out and I was offering an opportunity for Director Reiner to add on to anything that I might have missed.
You covered it pretty well. Happy to answer any questions. And you know, again, it's the ARPA Coordinator position, which then got changed to the Grant Writer position. It was a temporary position and we think because of that, we weren't getting really good recruitment from it. There's still a very big need to continue to manage the ARPA program. You know, we have two-plus years still of, there's a lot of projects that are still going through. We need to document that, manage all that paperwork. You know, getting the grant is, we often look at as, yes, we got the grant. Okay, what's next? It's like, then we gotta do the grant. And there's still a lot of that kind of doing happening. And that's really why the focus the first year is still 100% ARPA. And then we think, you know, year two, it can be that 50-50 split to start going after some other grants helping. There's a lot of money out there federally, state level, that we just aren't going for because we don't have the staff capacity to apply for it. And then once we get it, we'll figure out the best way to manage it.
Thank you. Counselor McBride, I believe you had the referral in for a Grant Writer. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Did you want to speak on this?
I'll just briefly say I'm in full support of it. I appreciate this coming forward to the council. The only question I had, and I think you answered it, was ARPA this year, the six months remaining, and the next year, half and half. Will any ARPA use, be used in fiscal '27, those six months? Or will that, will that be all new general fund?
I think we'll look at if it's still during, it'll still be during that prior to December 31st, 2026. I'm just trying to keep calendar years and fiscal years straight in my head. So that year, when we go forward through the budgetary process, if there's still a lot of people who are going on with ARPA, we might say, yeah, let's do 25%, because then it would really be half of that portion of the year.
Understood.
But I think, you know, we can discuss that with what, you know, the pulse of the council.
Okay. And how many positions are now in the Grant Division of your department?
Well, I don't have a Grants Division.
Correct.
Maybe I'm calling it what I should, but how many Grant-related employees within your, your department?
Well, right now, different folks, if we have bandwidth, will apply for grants. So for example, at one point in time, my Economic Development Specialist position had applied for the Community Challenge Grant. That was the, I think, $6.8 million grant that we got from the State DECD. We got through the paperwork on that and we're soon are gonna have to start implementing that one. And that's gonna be one of those, oh, all right, how do we manage this project from a bandwidth perspective? In the past, Megan Granato, our Sustainability and Resiliency Manager, has been applying for a lot of grants because we had other projects that we had matching funds for. So there are some really good opportunities. So I mean, she's probably been the biggest grant person in the recent past, although that one DECD grant that we received was very substantial. Also, as I think about it, our Planner Two that focuses on housing and community development, really our CDBG program, will help write and administer the CDBG grant. So those are kind of the, the three people that will play within that realm as time allows. But we don't have any one person that is specific to grants. Formerly, the ARPA Coordinator was a position that was put together solely to manage the ARPA program.
Okay. This position will be solely focused on grants, though?
This position would, yeah, year one would be focused on ARPA, managing the existing grant and the implementation of some of those as people need help. And then kind of, once we get into the second year of that, we'd be looking to help and partner with, you know, Public Works because there's a lot of like federal transportation money out there. And there's a lot of other economic development and planning-type grants that we just haven't had the bandwidth to apply for over the time.
No, thank you. I'm in full support. Appreciate it coming forward.
Thank you. Counselor Gajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I remember supporting this when Counselor McBride made the referral with then-Counselor Franco, but now Mayor Franco. I'm full supporter of this. The only question I have through the mayor is, could you, do you have an estimated financial timeline of when this position will be fully funded by the town and not ARPA money?
All right. Right now, we're in-
Yeah, the transition, so the rest of this fiscal year, which is June 30th of next calendar year, will be all ARPA. And then June 30th of '25, or 7/1/25 to 6/30/26, which will be FY '26, will be partly funded. So I think it's winding down.
It may be a quarter for one more year.
Yeah.
All right. That's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I was wondering, because this is like a non-union job. We've heard throughout time here in the town about people, trying to get people to work here, to stay here, to make sure we're paying the right salaries. Is there any benefits special to this job? Because it's different, it's probably a unique position in our town departments, I would say. It's not like they have to deal with customers. They're not dealing with-
Well, stakeholders.
Right, stakeholders. But they're not like at the desk getting permits and applications and things of that nature or going out and, is there possibilities for them to have flex hours or to have remote work or hybrid? Or is there other things that would be enticing? Because you've already put it out once, it didn't pan out, and we're still, we're back at the drawing board again. Is there anything that we could add to this? Or is it flexible enough that, if necessary, the way it's written? Because I mean, I saw in there, it said something to the effect of, just, the work environment is that of a typical business office setting, occasional weather conditions when visiting off-site locations, the noise level, blah, blah, blah. But is that sort of gentle enough that you could maybe make some, if necessary, make some adjustments to that?
I think there's a couple of things to consider about the way it was posted last time. The last one had a much narrower range because it was very specific around ARPA funding and the rules. This is gonna be the full expanded range based on the new salary ranges that we did. So that's one plus. It's gonna look very different. The, I think that's a primary. The other item is that it's not limited term. Many folks are not quite interested in something that has an end date. So I think that's two things that the position already has going for it.
Okay.
As far as uniqueness, there are quite a few unique positions, I would say, within the non-union group. And we try to honor and support them all. And we have revamped on the website, really, things to focus on that really most of town folks have anyway, but what the benefits are. There are caveats for flexibility, but I want to be mindful that this is part of a whole non-union group. So we need to be thinking about, what does everybody have access to in that non-union group versus carving this out very specifically to identify one specific different item for it. So that's my perspective, thinking globally versus, you might have a little bit of a different perspective from a department, but I have to look at the global total rewards and how we're putting that out there.
Very understood.
And they get to work with a super cool department, too.
Yeah.
That's a benefit that just is out there.
Who wouldn't want to come to work every day?
Yes.
Well, I appreciate that. And I just wanted to see, like, if there's anything else we could do to offer any kind of flexibility to make sure that you can try and get this position filled. And I think that you've made some valid arguments there to support this. So I thank you. And I wish you all the best on this. And I don't see any more hands, so we'll take a vote on 2024-836, Grant Writer and Administrator Position and Job Description. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
I would say aye.
Thank you. Passes seven to zero to zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Up next, 2024-827, Cannabis Tax Revenue Disbursement Discussion. This is in our packet on page 78. I'll just give sort of a little background here. I'll read from the packet. It says, "The Connecticut Public Act 21-1 allows for the sale of recreational cannabis and stipulates the collection of a 3% municipal tax on sales to be given to the local municipality. Funds received from the municipal tax include: streetscape improvements and other neighborhood developments in communities where cannabis retailer, hybrid retailers, and micro cultivators are located; education programs or youth employment and training programs in the municipality; number three, services for individuals living in the municipality who are released from the DOC custody; number four, mental health or addiction services; number five, youth services bureaus and multiple juvenile review boards; and what?
Municipal."
Oh, I'm sorry, municipal juvenile report, review boards; and six, community civic engagement efforts. This remains, there remains $53,250.64 in unassigned funds collected in fiscal year 2024 from the municipal tax on cannabis. So this is open for council discussion.
Counselor Parker. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a suggestion, and I'm gonna try to put forth the motion right now. For the $53,050.64 to go to Always Home, with the stipulation that it goes, is applied to Groton residents as they assist our, they assist people here in Groton. And this is a, I'll stop there. I need a second.
Second by Pacino.
Okay, I have a motion from Parker, seconded by Pacino. Do you have anything else you would like to state?
I'm sorry, did you say something? I missed that part.
I'm sorry, I was like, I was asking if you would like to say anything else.
No, I just think that there are certain organizations that can assist our residents, and I believe this is a good one to apply to, as the funds will have different organizations that probably could use the funds. And this is one of them that helps our community a lot.
Thank you. Counselor Rusk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to disclose that I work for United Way of Southeastern Connecticut. I do not work with Always Home, but they do receive grant money from United Way. But I have no financial ties with them, so I can participate in this discussion.
Okay. Counselor McBride?
Yeah, I just have a question. How much, do we have a number of how much we receive annually for this or just an estimate? Is it, you know, $100,000 or?
Well, we received, we just, about $150,000.
So about $150,000 in '24?
Yeah. It might, it might go up slightly this year because we just got word of another settlement. There's always different, there's like seven or eight settlements.
This is in settlement, this is cannabis money.
What's that?
This isn't a settlement, this is cannabis.
Percentage of sales.
Yeah, that's right. $150,000, though.
Do you expect that number to grow through other dispensaries opening up? Or is that, will this be-
There had been one others, you know, talked about one, but that's been a little while. We kind of expected there'd be, sorry, that there'd be two. There was talk of one, but at this point, nothing in the last year's been spoken about it.
Okay. And I'm not opposed to the, the motion on the floor, but I would like us to, at some point, even maybe after tonight's motion, to consider some type of framework where we inform the public about this money that's coming, because it's a big chunk of change coming in every year, and have people apply or at least give some letters of recommendation on what they need the money for. A little more proactive approach, reaching out to everyone in Groton to see if they have needs that can be met, that we can look forward to moving this, you know, giving this money to them in the future. So that would be my thought. It's just that we can try to move that forward versus us just selecting every quarter on our own without really informing the public. So I really just don't comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Boarderline?
I echo those same sentiments that Counselor McBride stated. The same thing when the other money, the monies that have come forward, we just kind of allotted that money on the spot with this motion from the floor to different agencies. And I do think that there should be a more collaborative rollout of this. As I've stated before, I'm not saying that it shouldn't go to Community Speaks Out or to the other organizations that, you know, are serving our community in great lengths, Always Home. I do think, though, in fair openness, these tax dollars are allotted from the community, and we should look at ways to let them know that there's an agenda item, publicize it, and have other people come maybe speak about the needs and ways. And that way, we could possibly break up the distributing funds. But I do think I can agree with Counselor McBride, that there should be a better way to, we could do a better way to invite the community and let them in on the opportunity to apply for these funds. And we could go up with a way where, you know, there's a night where they present and we figure and narrow down how we want to move forward. I think it's very vital. A lot of this stuff can go to youth programs as well. Some's help, some people offset things for schools, programming that help, you know, people that are dealing with addiction or homelessness and things like that that are affected by all this. So I'd love to see a broader brush and scope of how we just do this. In all fairness to all the nonprofit agencies that are doing a lot of great work in our community. So that's kind of where I'm at. So I guess, the Town Manager, what would something like that have to look like?
It could be done however. It's really wide open for how the council wants to handle things.
Right. And I just, you know, wonder how other towns are handling it. It'd be good to look into what, you know, we're unique and there's just so much opportunity here to help. I think some of this stuff has even helped score. I guess for scope, to the Town Manager, can you go over exactly what these funds can be used for?
I read that when, at the beginning of this, I gave you the stipulations from one through six of what-
Didn't say you did read it. Never said that. I'm just simply saying I was gonna finish that, like, it's very broad. Can, like, sports boards, scoreboard with that fall under youth programming? Or would have to be programming, like, I mean, I guess I was reading it on the state site and I was just looking for any more clarification, because it can be delineated down even further based on what's in our packet in a broad, more description.
I think as long as you can make a connection with one of these in some capacity, it'd be allowed. I don't think it's overly restrictive.
Okay. So it could enhance, so the way I'm reading this, this could enhance sports, like, say this, the high school had a need for, at football for whatever, or it could help with the scoreboard be just allotted money for. I mean, there's a lot of different things outside of nonprofits, is my understanding. Is that correct?
I don't know if sports would quite follow.
Okay, okay. We will get to that.
Counselor Parker, can you please put yourself on mute? Thank you.
To see if any, like, funding for youth sports, because one of the things that I've read is, you know, making sure you have properly funded programs or grants for kids to pay for sports, that maybe that may, maybe that can't afford it, you know, helps keep people from, you know, turning to drugs and having opportunity and things to do in our community. So it'd be great if you could, you know, maybe bring some more information on that for the next time.
Mayor?
Yes?
Just to mention that, you know, with a lot of foresight, the Board of Ed had added a Grant Writing position on, and I think that'd probably be something that would fall great underneath that Grant Writer, if you're talking about any of the school sports.
Thank you.
And then Parks Direct Department's constantly looking for any grant dollars for our Parks Direct Department.
Thank you.
Right. Again, I didn't say that. I was just saying ways to enhance other nonprofit sports events in our community. Not talking broadly about the school or their grant writing.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Counselor Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question for the mayor, or the Town Manager, through the mayor. Do Always Home, I know we previously allocated $100,000 for Community Speaks Out and Always Home, do they receive budget money from us?
They are in our budget as an outside service, and I believe they receive about $7,000 annually.
And-
They also, I'm sorry, excuse me. They also received ARPA funding from us for mobility and transportation, so people can get back and forth to work during our ARPA funding.
So they are an outside agency that the town has consistently given to?
Yes, they are vetted by the town and we use them, right?
Okay. And then I follow-up question to that is, are there other outside agencies that we have in that description that could fit the potential description in here?
Yes, I think there are numerous town outside agencies, even including the Bill Memorial Library, the Mystic Library, and numerous other ones that are, that we have that discussion every year on that would fit this criteria.
Okay. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to possibly reaching out to those potential outside agencies in the future to let them know that this money could become available to them and see what they'd be able to do with it. I'll be in favor of the motion on the floor. Always Home is a great organization. But, so I just wanted to state that on the record, and I yield back.
Thank you. I also was gonna bring up the fact that Always Home is in our budget, and we give them $7,000 a year. They, I think this, if we are going to be looking at something to do with our cannabis money on an annual basis, I think we should have the discussion and figure out how we would like to do this going forward and maybe have some kind of process or policy. Me personally, I had thought about it, and I would like to, at least in the beginning, open this up to our outside services and help fund them with good amounts of money that where they can do good in our community. This will also help us in our budget process, I think, because this is, outside service is usually the one that hits our heart the most. It is usually the longest discussions, it is the one that we have the hardest time, and we can literally talk for an hour on whether we give them $1,000 or $1,500 more or less per year. I mean, this is because it's so close to some people's hearts. So my thought, as was mentioned, that it would be good to try and take care of these nonprofits that are vetted and that help our community already and help them do more within our community going forward. I am absolutely in favor of Always Home, and what we've heard so much is about housing and homelessness and all kinds of other issues that are going on with them, with people in our community that have mental health issues and addiction issues, as well as, you know, helping with education programs and training programs. I think they would fit this criteria very well, and I will be absolutely in support of this. Thank you. Counselor Rusk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of questions. I'm definitely in support of Always Home. I believe they do great work. Do they need to use this money within a certain period of time?
They do not. There's no restriction like there is with the ARPA dollars.
Okay. So they can hold it and use it for Groton residents as that happens?
It can be carried over from one year to the next.
Yes.
From fiscal year to the next. Fantastic. I do agree that we need some sort of process.
I would love to have that by the next go-around and have people apply. If we have $150,000, what can you do with a portion of that money? And I think that, while I agree with, moving forward with Always Home now, I think that next year, I would like to see something happen more spread out throughout the community. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Boarderline?
Quick question through the mayor to the Town Manager. When is the deadline to have this allocated to an outside agency? Or what is our?
There is no deadline. It's up to the council.
So I mean, I just don't see why we're not, we could have it on the next agenda item as a process and have this allocated the week after and open it up. Again, I think Always Home is great, but I just, you know, I do feel concerned for other agencies that don't feel they have a fair stake. I think it's too late to wait, and a couple weeks is not really gonna change anything. And I think we should open up this process, as I stated before, when we had the NIP money and other things. There's a lot of people who spoke up, who said that they felt like they didn't have a chance, they didn't even have a chance to even express their interest of wanting to pursue an opportunity. And I'm a firm believer in making sure that some funding is actually distributed equally or fairly throughout the process in the sense where, you know, we don't have to necessarily dedicate all the money today to one agency. We could give them $20,000 or $30,000, and then maybe fund five or 10 to a smaller agency. Again, outside resources are very beneficial, and it's important not to seat just one because multiple of them, multiple agencies, do some of the same work, and the need is broad, and people need multiple options when other agencies can't help them. So I don't know. I'd like to make a motion on the floor to request that we put this on the next agenda item to briefly discuss the process, which is kind of what I thought we should have tonight, and then come up with a process and open it up to the community. So that would be my motion.
I don't hear a second.
That's fine. But it's on the record that I'm asking for it. Again, if that's the wish of the council tonight, is to take all the money and give it to one agency, then that's, that's the wish. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Parker, you had your hand up. It's down now. Did you have anything you'd like to share?
Let's share. No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Counselor Pacino?
I would imagine that this agency that we're giving this money to, they're asking for $7,000 this, this past year. They won't ask for more in multiple years to come. They'll probably stay static at $7,000 for years to come. And I think that's a good thing for us to be able to budget that in and for them to be able to budget that for themselves. And I think coming up with a program for the next batch of money, because there's gonna be a next batch of money, is, is fine. And we'll do that at that point. But right now, I think what we're doing here is a good thing.
All right. Thank you. I agree. I think over, maybe this winter, this is a little project we can take on and come up with a process, policy. Counselor McBride?
Just to comment, the other thing we could consider, I don't know if Attorney Burt thinks it, but we could, during the fiscal '26 budget process, you can know you have the $150,000, and as we're going through the budget process, they all submit all those requests. We could use some, you know, put that money in revenue, use that money as part of the budget process, because you know you have the $150,000. Instead of setting up a whole new process, just do it during the budget. Just a suggestion to think about. Maybe the opioid money, too, but it's the process. So that was all, just a thought.
It's a thought. Thank you. Hmm. I'll have to ponder that one over, because I'm trying to think, like, hmm, will that add more to us on the budget session? All right, then. Seeing no more hands, let's take a vote. On the motion on the floor by, made by Parker, seconded by Pacino, to give Always Home-
Give Always Home.
$53,250.64 of our cannabis money with a criteria that they use it for Groton residents only. All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. That passes seven to zero to zero. All right. Any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Parker.
Motion for adjourn by Parker.
Seconded by Rusk.
Seconded by-
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Counselor Boarderline, I didn't get your vote.
Always said aye.
Did she say yes? All right. That passes seven to zero to zero. We are adjourned. Safe trip home, everybody. Thank you and have a good night. It is 9:22 PM.
It is 9:22 PM.